Ready?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to start the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board dated December 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. So I want to call the meeting to order and ask our secretary to call the roll.
Susan Denny?
Here.
Nancy Genelcor?
Here.
Michael Hartman?
Here.
Stephen Stroud?
Here.
Okay, four of you, four of the four Planning and Zoning Board members are here. We have a quorum. First item is, as usual, public participation. Are there any members of the public that want to participate this evening? And there are no members of the public present, so there will be no public participation other than our interviewee. There's no old business, new business. I would ask that we add an item, and that is the election of the Chair and Vice Chair. If you recall, at the last Planning and Zoning Board meeting, our Chair and Vice Chair termed out rather suddenly, so they're not here this evening. So at this point, it would be up to you to elect a Chair, and you all can nominate. Each one of you would have the ability to nominate one of the existing members for Chair, and then by majority vote, you'll select a Chair. So at this point, I'd open the floor to any nominees for the position of Chair.
I nominate Mr. Stroud.
Are there any other nominations?
I would nominate Mr. Stroud.
Second.
Okay, with that, a motion would be in order to elect Mr. Stroud, the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board.
I make a motion to have Mr. Stroud be the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No discussion? Call the roll, please.
Susan Denny?
Here.
For.
Nancy Genelcor?
For the motion.
Michael Hartman?
For.
Stephen Stroud?
For.
Okay, we now have a new Chair. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Your first, your first order of business is to get us through the election of a Vice Chair.
All right. First order is we need to have a nomination for a Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Susan Denny.
Sorry, I knew it was coming.
I second that nomination.
Fine by me.
Okey dokey. I'm leaving soon, I know.
For the motion.
Nancy Genelcor?
For the motion.
Michael Hartman?
For.
And Chairman Stroud?
For the motion.
You're gonna move to the big boy chair? Or you want me to move the gavel?
We'll have to move.
Oh, here, I can move the gavel over. Oh, he's gone.
You want me to move or just stay here, Connor, and make it easier on you? You don't have to move too many people.
You want to consolidate the chair, that way you don't...
We're just kind of spread out here.
Either way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna move all my stuff.
All right, now that we've got that out of the way, I want to do the next order of business, and that is to interview a board applicant, Ms. Susan Ryder.
We need to approve the minutes.
Need to approve the minutes? Okay, I'll back up. Let's have an approval on the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October.
I'll second the motion.
All right, ready to call roll?
Vice Chair Denny?
For the motion.
Nancy Genelcor?
For the motion.
Michael Hartman?
For the motion.
Chairman Stroud?
For the motion.
All right, that's done. Now, we will interview the board applicant, Ms. Susan Ryder.
Suzanne.
Suzanne, excuse me. I don't always put out what I'm reading here. Just step up to the microphone and tell us, tell us about yourself.
Press the button, make sure the green light's on.
It is, yes. Again, my name is Suzanne Ryder. I am a resident of Cape Canaveral. I have lived here just under two years. Formerly lived in New York and had a 25-plus-year municipal career with a Planning and Development Office as a project manager slash quasi-grant writer. Here in Cape Canaveral or in Brevard, I am working for the Brevard County Public Works Department as a JPA writer slash coordinator and grant writer slash coordinator. I served on my hometown's planning board for just over three years before I moved here to Florida, and I look forward to serving the community that I live in now in that similar I've worked on various different projects over the years, everything from, you know, the creation of new parks to, you know, multi-million-dollar development, you know, multi-use development projects, and so I'm familiar with, you know, the process that a planning board goes through to make sure those projects happen in a efficient and costly way. And so, I mean, I'd love for you guys to ask me any questions that you might have for me at this point. I think, you know, I'm a good candidate, I believe, so if you guys have any questions for me.
Well, I have to agree with you. You're, I've read your resume here, and you've done a lot. You've done quite a bit, and it looks like you might be a real good fit for us. I'll refer to our other board members here.
So how big a town did you come in from, New York? You know, Cape Canaveral's kind of a small place.
So the city that I worked for was about 79,000 people. The town I lived in that I served on the planning board was much smaller, about 15,000 people in the community.
Okay, so do you like Cape Canaveral?
I love it here, yes.
Good, good. All right, thanks. Can I ask, what brought you here?
I have family here in Cape Canaveral, and as I was ending my career in New York, I wanted to be closer to my brother and his family, and so I naturally, you know, thought that being here in sunny Florida would be, you know, a great way to, you know, continue doing what I love, and so I was fortunate enough to get a job with Brevard County doing what I love, so here I am.
Well, it certainly looks like you'd be a real asset to the board, so...
Thank you.
Okay, you've kind of stolen all my questions already, so I think we've gotten the answers. But no, I would agree that with your background, you would be an asset to this board, so...
Thank you.
I'd like to ask, you filled out through the number sequence here of the different boards that you wanted to apply for, and you put us first. Was it just filling out the blanks and putting something in them, or was it, if you weren't going to get on this board, you were going to shoot for another board?
No, this was clearly the board that I wanted to be a part of, and I know Renee and Connor had interviewed me earlier on, and, you know, I did mention that this was where I wanted to be, but I also am very civic-minded, and so I figured however I can get involved in my community, you know, would suit me, but this is the board that I had most experience with in, you know, in my past in New York, so this was definitely my number-one choice.
That's kind of the answer I was expecting to get from you, especially with your background and everything.
Yeah.
So, have any other questions? All right, I'd like to have a, get a motion for...
I'll make a motion to recommend Suzanne to be on the Planning and Zoning Board.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Renee, you have a vote?
Vice Chair Denny?
For the motion.
Member Genelcor?
For the motion.
Member Hartman?
For the motion.
Chairman Stroud?
For the motion.
All right, well, the next step in the process is, is your interview based on our recommendation to the City Council, and I'll tell you what, we look forward to having you on our board.
Excellent, thank you for your time.
You bet, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
By the way, as we're going through our proceedings tonight, feel free to chime in because you appear to be going to be a future with us and stuff, so if there's something of interest, let us know, and we'll give you an opportunity.
Yep, and just one quick note, we do have her tentatively on the schedule to be heard at the December 16th City Council meeting, so we'll move quickly on that, especially with your guys' recommendation to do so, so thank you.
I think we're gonna need to do that, too.
Yep.
Anyway, all right, let's see here. Our next item is consideration of ordinance number 082025, amending Chapter 110, Site Plan and Chapter 22, Community Appearance Board, and revised review procedures, streamline approval process. So you want to go ahead and guide us through this?
Yeah, I'll do a quick runover. This ordinance was brought about to kind of streamline the development process, to revise, you know, procedures, just because they were a little bit counterintuitive at times, so this helps clean it up a little bit. It aligns with the comprehensive plan. I included two excerpts from our comprehensive plan as it relates to, you know, city boards and also guiding the future development of Cape Canaveral. The major, you know, points that I'm gonna hit, it defines the difference between regular site plan review for larger developments and minor site plan review, which would be, you know, reviewed through the building permit process with staff, and that's just for single-family and duplexes, so everything above that would go through the regular site plan review process. Another major difference is where height approvals come from. As it currently stands, the Community Appearance Board is involved in allowing for heights that are greater than what would typically be allowed in code, up to 65 feet, and that would streamline to have the height, increased height be considered concurrently with the site plan by City Council rather than separately by the Community Appearance Board. And it also makes sure that the site plan is reviewed concurrently with other regulations like stormwater and subdivision requirements, so that those things aren't being considered after the board has already looked at it. Really, the overall goal of it is just efficiency and clarification. There are a few, you know, material changes, but I'm sure as you guys have gone through on your review, you've noticed that it's mostly just clerical stuff. So another big thing is timelines. There was some recent Florida legislation and also just helping us have it be in our city code that there will be clear review windows, and that would mean that 14 days after it was distributed to staff, that they would have to return comments to the developer, and then that would get sent back to the developer on that 14-day timeline. So the only attachments on this one are the ordinance itself and the proof of public notice, but staff recommends that the board recommend approval of this ordinance to City Council, in which they'd do two readings of it.
All right. Anything else to add to that at this point?
Not right now, but we're happy to answer questions.
All right, super. I'm gonna ask you to turn to, let me get to my marked spot, page nine of 17.
All right.
Item number 10. The addition here is underlined, and I'll just go ahead and read this. Whether the applicant has provided an acceptable testing and security plan for proposed establishment to be located on the site addressed the safety and security needs they establish and its users and its employees, and monitors and minimizes impacts on the neighborhood if applicable. So can you define to me testing? The word testing, why is that inserted in there, and what is the meaning of that?
I think that my interpretation of that would be that there are certain things that, you know, may require a higher level of monitoring, and right now, the way that the ordinance is written, it is set up to try to minimize impact, and, you know, here's our plan to make sure it's safe, but I don't really think it takes into consideration how you would do that, so I think the testing piece of it and the monitoring piece of it kind of allude to that, but I'll let Anthony add on.
Yeah, normally, if you've got testing, then you have a protocol, but I'm gonna move a little further down to it. I want to go down to number 12, and I'm gonna zero in on this, and I'm gonna go ahead and read this aloud also. Whether the applicant has demonstrated that the site plan has designed incorporated testing and security systems, and I'm gonna stop right there. So the next thing I'm gonna ask is, is what do we mean by security systems? When I look at security systems, I see those two words joined together. That means one thing and one thing only, something that's protecting the premise, like an alarm system. And when I read that and when I see that, that's the first thing that pops into my mind. Now, the reason for that is, is I've been in that industry since 1985. So I read that, and it just jumped off the page to me, and it's like, well, wait a minute, council is not reviewing the electrical system, they're not reviewing the plumbing system, so I see a problem with that being in there, stating security system.
Anthony, would you want to allude to maybe why it wasn't included?
Okay, so I mean, the context of the whole section are the review criteria for site plan approvals under the regular site plan approval process. Those are the factors or review criteria under which a site plan is reviewed. Sometimes the criteria is not relevant to the situation at hand, so that review criteria is, can we, staff will check off and say, okay, this is not relevant in this particular case. However, in some cases, the issue of a security plan, which is currently in the code, or a testing need may come up in the context of the site plan in terms of conditions that are imposed as a condition of approval for a site plan in order to mitigate against any adverse consequences. So testing was added because there may be, and then the score may, be some situations where the particular development project requires as a condition of approval some level of ongoing testing and monitoring in order to alleviate, you know, any adverse effects that may result from the development. So that's that. With respect to paragraph 12, criteria, same thing. If there's a security system that would be required as part of a site plan, then that particular criteria would apply.
So...
But I don't, there's no definition per se in there?
I would be, I would prefer to see security plan, but not system. We did a, we're working on a project right now where our designer did a complete security plan. I mean, it's got card access, it's got cameras and everything. Went down and to submit it, they said, that municipality said, oh, we don't review that, we don't need that. And so, you know, at the most, you would need a low voltage permit. I know I'm kind of moving on the subject here, but again, when I see that word "system" in there, that immediately keys up, and we're talking about, you know, door contacts, infrared, motion detection, all that stuff, so I would prefer to see that word changed.
To "plan"?
To "plan."
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chair, if I can add something to what you said?
Yes, go ahead.
Looking at it, and again, having been a developer for 32 years, I kind of look at it from that perspective, too, and you seem to say that somewhere in our code, we define testing and security plan, or security plan is somewhere defined, because when there's an undefined term that we have to meet, you know, we don't know if we need to spend, do a simple plan that costs maybe $1,000, or we have to do a full-blown security plan that costs $100,000, and if that's a defined term somewhere in that code, I think it would be good so that people would know, here's the exact criteria. I've got, I mean, it's just like the situation that you said, Mr. Chair. You guys did a whole plan, and it turned out you didn't need to do it, and, you know, that just costs money and time to do that, so I don't know if it's defined somewhere else, and maybe we need to capitalize this and reference where it's defined, or...
I didn't, I don't believe I said it was defined, but it's gonna have to, it's gonna depend on the context of the site plan that's under review. I mean, I don't, I don't know what...
Okay, I'm sorry, not defined, but required, I think you used, you said.
Yeah, it's a, the paragraphs on page nine, right?
Right.
Is the list of criteria for the review of the site plan, and as I said, in some cases, an application, when you're reviewing the criteria, may warrant testing or a security plan as part of the approval process.
Yeah.
I don't have any particular development project in mind. Hypothetical would be on a testing front, say hypothetically, the, you know, the, actually, this is an interesting hypothetical, if there's a certain level of discharge that may result from a specific project that's going to go into a city system such as a...
Right, okay.
...system or a drainage system.
Affluence or stormwater.
Right, affluence. Maybe under special circumstances, the project is okay to move forward, but as a condition of that aspect of the project may warrant periodic tests and submission to the city, just to make sure a certain...
Okay.
Like a criteria, so it depends on context, and...
It may just be that we're reading it different because to the chairman and I, when we think of security, we're thinking of a different type of system than something like what you guys described.
So, so there is another, on page 10, the word "security system" is used again, and that might be appropriate to change the word "system" to "plan" in that area, too, and that's the very next page, right at the top, line one.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a good catch, too. Again, I think, I think "plan" works well because the existing criteria uses "security plan," so that makes it consistent.
Mm-hmm.
And again, it's all gonna depend on context of a specific application. It may or may not be relevant to the particular application at hand. This gives the board the ability as part of the review criteria, since it's a review criteria, the board can probe that issue. That's what the criteria, review criteria is all about, is establishing certain benchmarks to probe an application that, under certain circumstances, you know, an application may not be in compliance with the criteria, or the criteria may scream out that the board needs to impose conditions of approval, and conditions of approval are much easier to impose when the criteria directs the board and allows the board to review the application and that specific issue.
Okay.
Good, good response. Mr. Genelcor, anything to add to this one?
You know, I really don't. To me, it just seems like almost a no-brainer to go ahead with this. It's efficient, and I don't think we're going to lose anything in the process unless I've missed that.
Okay. Susan?
I'm all for efficiency.
Absolutely.
Well, this is part of, you know, this is a council directive, and this site plan, of course, is one of the critical application review that the city will endeavor to handle, and what the council's trying to do is streamline the development permit process, so it's not in silos, and that things can be funneled and reviewed more comprehensively, and the way that, the way that the council's directed that be done is that the council will ultimately have final approval on site plan. Doesn't change the role of the Planning and Zoning Board, they're pivotal in all of this, but by allowing the council to make decisions, the council wants to be accountable for those decisions, but it allows certain changes to the process to be combined and consolidated and handled more comprehensively, rather than have to go, well, I gotta go to the P&amp;Z Board for one issue, Board of Adjustment for another, Community Appearance Board for another, and oh, I gotta make a stop at the council, too, and have different components of a project approved. That's very inefficient, it's very timely for developers.
No, absolutely.
Developers want a one-stop shop if they can get...
Want a one-stop shop, that's right. We don't want to have to go through four hearings, we want one hearing.
We're trying to create a one-stop, or relatively a one-stop shop.
This is my money, and I want to build, build, build.
Right. So that's what we're attempting to do at the council's direction. This is, this is just step one in that process.
Absolutely. All right.
I had a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, if I could bring up...
Yes.
Questions and comments. And yes, I do appreciate it, the fact, I think it is good, because when you have those silos and you have to go in order, people don't understand, well, I can't go to the Planning and Zoning Board until I go through the Community Appearance Board, so if the Community Appearance Board doesn't meet this month, then I can't get to the Planning and Zoning Board until next month, which means I can't get to the City Council until the month after that, and the meantime, the project is sitting there, not benefiting the city in any way, shape, or form, because it's tied up in the timing of the process, so I appreciate that. Couple of things, on page six of 17, on 3A, I wanted to see if we could add some language after the words "10 inches of adjoining property comma," I want to say "and finished grades for adjoining roads comma." And the reason I make that comment is, is that I've seen in the past, when we, when you drive down North Atlantic, you can see that there's a dip down into all the developments, okay? And I've gone through there many a time where that dip is flooded, and I'm talking about a foot to two foot of water, because it dips down three feet below the crown of North Atlantic Avenue, and I think that's a safe, a fire safety issue, because if somebody's having a heart attack, can the ambulance get through two feet of water? Can the fire department get through two feet of water? I mean, it's something to think about, and that's why I would like to see if we could add those words in that subpar.
Can you run that by us again?
Okay, after "10 inches of adjoining property comma," add the words "finished grades for adjoining roads comma," or "and finished grades for adjoining roads."
You have to go right...
Okay, right down there.
Yeah. I think that's logical, especially because we're already asking it for the whole parcel and the neighboring property. I think you're right, that roads are a very important part of our infrastructure, and they do flood, so...
So, just again, just using kind of experience from living here for years. Question on page eight of 17. Am I reading Section 22.45, the strike-through on that, that we're not going to have the concept of a concept plan anymore? We're gonna go straight to a regular site plan?
Can you give me the line number on that? It's page eight, line, the legislative line?
Section 110.222.2. City Council consideration of development agreement and conceptual site plan prior to site plan approval. Well, further on in this ordinance, we strike out Section 22.45, which deals with concept plans. So if we're striking out concept plans in one area, should this entire section be struck out because it appears that we're not going to have concept plan approvals anymore prior to site plan?
This, because there, there was, I don't know where that other reference to concept plan is, but it...
I think it's back on page, like, 14 or 15.
What page?
Page 15 of this ordinance, Section 22.45.
22, page 15, oh, yeah, okay.
We're striking out concept plans completely.
Yeah, it was stricken because that section is under the community... Yeah, it was stricken because, um, that section is under the Community Appearance Board's, um, um, jurisdiction. It was about, um, concept plans that are submitted to the Community Appearance Board.
Okay.
So that is, when we get to that, that's being proposed to be, um, stricken, um, number one, 'cause it's not necessary. The, the new section that's being added on page eight, and that's line nine, that's section one-ten dash two-two-two point two, is to actually put clarity in the code when there are situations where a de, a developer comes and wants to negotiate a development agreement and a concept plan-
Mm-hmm.
-early on in the process, before they get into engineering, site plan-
Right.
-review and all that.
Okay. I understand that. I just saw the, the strike-through of twenty-two dash forty-five on page fifteen, and I thought, okay, are we getting rid of concept plans, so?
Sure.
Okay.
Not getting rid of-
Then that's fine, then we should keep this section.
Yeah, be cut, be cut. I can give you a different, a better, a more thorough explanation is that, um, you know, the, this, the C A B, Community Appearance Board, the club, one of the clarifications is that its jurisdiction is only going to be related to aesthetics.
Okay.
And as a condition of even getting to the Community Appearance Board on aesthetics, assuming the council even wants to keep the Community Appearance Board, they have, an applicant will have to get their site plan approved first.
And then go to the C A B.
Then go to the C A B, and you wanna talk about pretty colors of a building or things like that. The Planning and Zoning Board would have already reviewed and recommended site plan, landscaping plan, and all of that. The council would have already approved the site plan and landscape plan. And then the C I B, C A B's function is simply going to be to review aesthetics of the building. The problem we have had for years has been staff presenting development projects to the Community Appearance Board first. And Community Appearance Board's sitting up there going, all right, you're proposing a six-story hotel and there's no site plan that's been approved. Their job isn't to approve site plans, and they're being asked to review aesthetics and concept plans and layouts of a development project that it hasn't even gone through the Planning and Zoning Board and City Council.
Okay.
It creates, created a lot of tension, at least lately, with the Community Appearance Board, because, you know, we didn't even know whether the project would fit on the site, 'cause it hasn't gone through site plan review.
Well, you don't know if it's gonna fit the criteria for that. You don't know if you have-
Exactly.
-the utilities to be able to support it.
Utilities, right away.
If you need a lift station, yada, yada.
Right, so we, s- striking concept plan out of chapter twenty-two, C A B, makes a lot of sense when you think about, they're not going to be looking at things if this all gets approved until after the site plan is approved.
Okay.
That's why-
But under our purview, we still have a concept plan.
It's being added on page eight, which you pointed out.
Okay.
The process is, you want a concept plan, all right? You need a development agreement, have your concept plan, you go to the Planning and Zoning Board, go to the City Council, all right? And that's the only way that you're gonna be able to get a concept plan approved before, um, you go through formal site plan approval. You're not gonna be going, presenting aesthetics and, and a development concept plan to a C A B that all, that only looks at aesthetics.
No, that makes, makes perfect sense to me now.
Then we come, how many times have we come to the Planning and Zoning Board and you're like, all right, well, they've already approved, approved aesthetics? And you're looking like, how does all this thing fit, right? I mean, it just was backwards.
True.
Right? So we're fixing that, hopefully.
Uh, Sid, do you all have any comments to make about this? Anything you wanna add to this conversation?
No, I think that Anthony is correct, that, uh, a lot of the times that it would make more sense to review aesthetics at the end, once we already know where things are going to fit on the property. So I think in general, this'll help, uh, make it easier on staff and just more logical.
And when I said, and I brought up the staff presenting, because you had developers time and time again telling staff, "We want our aesthetics approved first. We want our aesthetics approved first." And there's nothing in the code that currently addresses that, right? And so, you know, they're, they're, they're trying to be applicant-friendly and putting these things before the C A B, but it's the cart before the horse.
No, I would agree with you. I just didn't understand when I saw-
I'm glad you brought it up.
-the board eliminated in the one section, it seemed like, okay, are we getting rid of concept plans? So that was in my head, that just as it, do we have an inconsistency there, that's-
I mean, I love the comment, because it gives us an opportunity to elaborate why those changes are being made. Again, to streamline the process, making it-
We're painting a car and we don't have a car yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good analogy.
Let our customers service to, you know, paint that car after it exists.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
No, absolutely, agreed.
Uh, any, anything else?
One more comment, Mr. Chair, if I could. Um, section one-ten point six-two-four, building height, on page thirteen of seventeen, on one B, we talk about height mitigation measures such as a building step-back as illustrated in figure two and figure two A shall be required. Buildings exceeding forty-five feet shall provide a step-back of at least fourteen feet along all sides facing a public roadway. I guess my question is, if I could, you know, eh, why do we need height mitigation measures? And let me go through my whole thing, and then Connor, you can talk about it, you and Anthony. Um, I mean, how many people look at the top floors of a building as opposed to the bottom one or two floors? And how many people really notice the height of a building, whether it's forty-five feet or sixty-five feet? Just in my experience, I would contend that probably one percent of the people might really look at it and worry about the difference. And I look at this as something, looking at function over form, because when you're trying to build a building, let's say it's, whether it's, uh, a hotel, or whether it's apartments or condos, the whole idea is, is that you wanna stack light-kind units on top of each other. So you want all the three-twos to be stacked on each other, because you want the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing chases to all be in the same area for all those units going down through the stack, okay? You don't want pipes going sideways between floors. And if you have a step-back, and I've seen this on a building that I had to build in another jurisdiction, we ended up having to turn the units sideways for the top three or four floors. And what they did was, number one, it'll, it cut down the number of units that could be built in the footprint. And number two, now you've got chases that don't just go straight up and down through the building. You've got maybe the top three floors where all the chases are together. But then you've gotta route the electrical, the plumbing, and the mechanicals for the A C crosswise, and then down through the next set of chases. So it's, it just creates inefficiency. And I went around and I looked, and I just wanted to give some examples of buildings that are taller than forty-five feet with no step-back in our city. Um, Porta Del Rio Condos does not have a step-back. Bayport Condos does not have a step-back. Bayside Condos does not have a step-back. Um, Springs, Spring Hill Suites Hotel doesn't have a step-back. Town Place Suites Hotel doesn't have a step-back. Hilton Garden Inn doesn't have a step-back. Hyatt Place doesn't have a step-back. And Homewood Suites doesn't have a step-back. And so, you know, there's a lot of ways to do aesthetics, to make a building look nice, other than just doing a step-back. And to me, having it be in, the way this is written, it's "shall be required", to me, that's an absolute thing, that staff in the city don't really have any leeway there. If it says "shall", unless I'm wrong, Mr. uh, Mr. Attorney, that's saying "must" to me. So-
Correct.
Uh, you know, I, I think it's, I, I, I would like to just see a, a couple of sentences here taken out about the step-back. And in that way, give the latitude to the architects and the developer to come to us and say, hey, I wanna build this building, it's gonna be sixty-five feet high, but here's how I'm gonna make it look nice. Like, if you look at the hotels, they did frontages that, while it's not a step-back, it's still like little projections here and little decorations here. If you go to Porta Del Rio, in the front of all of our buildings, we have styrofoam structures on the fronts that give them aesthetics. You have the same thing on Bayport and Bayside, the same type of aesthetics, without a step-back. And, you know, I think the buildings look very good without the step-back. And, and just to give, I, I wouldn't wanna have it be there as an absolute, that you have to do this. That's all I'm saying, so.
Well, I think, I don't know the dates of construct, exact dates of construction of all the residential projects that you mentioned, but they may have preceded the adoption of this step-back requirement.
Probably did. They, Porta Del Rio, the West buildings were in two thousand and seven.
Yeah, hotels, on the other hand, you know, had to, I, I'm pretty sure they, they came in after the step-back requirement. Now, the current code says that it's, it's supposed to, this height mitigation measures such as building step-backs are proposed and approved by the Community Appearance Board. So there's this, there is this requirement that's currently in the code. So that's why "shall be required" was putting that, put in there. I thought it was a little clearer. But in terms of what the city, how staff has reviewed this issue, I'll let Connor speak to that, um, since he was here under the more recent hotels.
Sure. Yeah, so this, uh, section of the code is a piece of the A-1A Economic Opportunity Overlay District.
Right.
And that was passed a while back with the intent of creating more defined architectural standards for the city, uh, making sure that, you know, this district that's close to our main thoroughfare has a sort of architectural character that doesn't just prioritize, you know, building layout, but also prioritizes, you know, community feel. I think it was put in there because it was in alignment with what the council at the time and the Planning and Zoning Board at the time desired in terms of building aesthetics. You know, uh, when you're on the street, walking or biking, that makes the building feel a lot smaller and less daunting if it does have a step-back. Um, so I think they did it with the intent of, hey, we will allow for taller buildings in our city, which is something that not all residents necessarily support, but only if you are-
It's contentious issue.
Only if you are taking measures to improve the architectural character of the building while you are getting that additional height allowance. And I think that's a discussion that the Community Appearance Board would have with the developers a lot, in terms of, hey, yeah, we will grant you this height allowance. I think more often than not, they would grant the height allowance, but only if these certain things happen. I think that at certain times, this step-back, uh, piece in the A-1A Overlay District was interpreted more as a suggestion rather than a requirement, and that might explain why some historical buildings that were built after this code was put in place might not necessarily have the step-backs.
Well, if I can interject, the way it was written, if you look at the strike-through-
Yep.
The Community Appearance Board div, had, did have latitude to say, "We wanna step back or we don't wanna step back."
Correct, just whatever.
What I'm saying is, we've taken away that latitude. They, they, we've tied, staff's hands are tied now.
Yeah.
You have to demand a step-back, and the Community Appearance Board has to demand a step-back. There's no latitude, whereas the way it was written, it said, "are proposed and approved by the Community Appearance Board", so there was not this "shall" or "must be done". That's all I'm saying.
No, that's a good point, and I think that it could be advantageous to, you know, consider similar language as it relates to the City Council approval, in terms of, you know, hey, uh, increase building heights above four stories or forty-five feet may be proposed and considered for six stories or sixty-five feet, if approved by the City Council. And, uh, you know, architectural standards or height mitigation measures may be required, something like that, where it, uh, you know, it allows council to have that power, but it doesn't mandate that they do it, if it doesn't make sense.
That's, that's just what I'm suggesting, is that instead of tying staff's hands and council's hands and everybody's hands, that right now, the way it's written, to me, it reads like there's a, there's a latitude there.
Sure, yeah, and we also-
Because it, it says, well, it says, it, it, it said, "are, are, if", what was the height, "so does a building step-back", it said, "or setback are proposed and approved by the Community Appearance Board", so it used to be, there was a latitude there at that. If the Community Appearance Board said to make it look good, you've gotta do this, you had to do it, but if not.
But the next, you know, the next sentence I would point out that's not being changed, says, "Buildings exceeding forty-five feet shall provide a step-back of at least fourteen feet along all sides facing a public roadway."
But, well, then maybe should we take that out? Because-
You wanna recommend?
Um, to me, like I say, I, I think it's better for the city, for the City Council and for the boards to have some latitude, and for the staff to have some latitude in working with a proposed project in terms of suggestions, that your hands aren't tied and the City Council's hands aren't tied.
Yeah, I definitely think it should be phrased in a way that gives the city final authority to require those things if they so wish, but I'm not opposed to, you know?
It, it could state "could be required"
Mm-hmm.
To, to allow the latitude, 'cause the, like you said, "shall", I'm used to dealing with codes, and "shall" means you, you will.
Correct, yeah, that they shouldn't even approve it if, uh, um, so, yeah, we can, we can workshop the right way to phrase that, if that is a recommendation that you wanna make in terms of a change.
Oh, we're making a recommendation, so you, you wrestle with this issue. What do you recommend?
Maybe say, "Buildings exceeding forty-five feet may be required to provide a step-back along all sides facing a public roadway at the, uh, what's the word I'm looking for?
Discretion.
Discretion, thank you.
Yeah.
Of the City Council.
At the discretion of the City Council as a condition of receiving additional height, yeah. So that, I'm just trying to workshop where it would actually be in the sentence.
Is it for, is it just for buildings over forty-five he, feet?
Correct.
All right, so then, I guess one suggestion would be to, um, is that we have to, those two sentences, beginning on line thirty-two, ending on line thirty-five, probably should read then, "Height mitigation measures such as building step-back as illustrated in figure two and figure two A may be required"
Mm-hmm.
"by the City Council."
And then probably thirty-four and thirty-five, the next sentence should probably be removed.
Will come out, yes, exactly. And then that comes out.
Mm-hmm.
Then it stays in there, and if it's approved by coun, required by council, it's required.
Now, on the other hand, I can see where unfortunately, that can lead us into litigation, because if you have a standard that allows discretion of the City Council, you know, that can always lead to other troubles. But I'd still rather have it be that we had, the City Council had a discretion to not require it if they didn't feel like it was needed. There was other measures that could be taken to make it aesthetically pleasing.
Sure, and the precedent would show that we actually made it less, you know, restrictive. And well, if anything, it's going from one board having the discretion to the other board, so I don't think it necessarily creates any additional restrictions.
And actually, I think it, I think it belongs under site plan approval process, 'cause like you're saying, you know, the building, at that point, you're approving what the form of the building is going to be, whether, and what the envelope is gonna look like. And the Community Appearance Board, as you're saying, is just doing in terms of coloration and maybe different materials and things like that. Um, do they have barrel tile roofs? Do they have shingle roofs, things like that? That's where I see the Community Appearance Board coming in. But as Chairman said, you don't paint the car until you got the car built, so.
Yep.
Well, I think that's the way it probably, it would work because I'm going to increase building heights above four stories or forty-five feet, and that's what we're talking about.
Correct.
May be proposed and considered up to six stories of sixty-five feet if approved by the city council in conjunction with the site plan approval process, which is being added. Height mitigation measures such as building step back as illustrated may be required by the city council.
And that would end it, and then take out the next sentence.
And we take out the next sentence. So the height mitigation measures.
So the height mitigation measures on the next page would still be there.
Yeah.
If the council, and so the people are on notice that we may require this, but it's up to the city council as part of the site plan approval process.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's one long sentence, but I think where the, we are, we're adding the language, if approved by the city council in conjunction with the site plan approval process. I think I prefer to put a, a comma in there and then, and height mitigation measures.
May be required.
Yeah, may be required.
Hmm.
Uh, such as a, such as, such as a step back, da, 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 da. So keep it. It's all part of the approval process. Um, I, I would combine that. I think that makes sense.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Definitely reads a lot better.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good, that's a good point.
Right, yeah.
That was all my comments, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate that very much. Any, any other members on the board here? Anthony, you have anything else to add to this?
I don't, I don't think so. Unless you have any questions.
Uh, I don't at this time, but, uh, uh, Ms. Ryder, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Um, no, I actually concur with Mr. Hartman on the, you know, the way the system works and all that.
Okay. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to be part of our, part of our board tonight. Anything else from, uh, city?
No, I believe we understand your recommended changes as it relates to calling it a security plan, not system. Uh, the second one was related to the finished grades for adjoining roads. And then that third one, as it relates to the height process becoming a may instead of a shall.
All right, well, um, at this time, uh, let's see if we have a motion to consider ordinance number zero eight dash two, zero twenty-five amending chapter one ten of zoning article, uh, uh, article six, site plans and chapter twenty-two, community appearance board revised review, uh, procedures and streamlined approval process with the stated changes, system change to plan, and, uh, also the areas that we've identified on page thirteen. All right.
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'm looking for a second on that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Fantastic. Uh, call the roll, please.
Vice Chairman Denny?
For the motion.
Board Member General Cor.
For the motion.
Board Member Hartman?
For the motion.
Chairman Stroud?
For the motion.
All right. Share that. All right. Next item on our agenda, final item, I believe, is to consider ordinance, uh, zero nine, twenty twenty-five, reassigning the duties of the board of adjustment to the city council and abolishing the board of adjustment. Planning and zoning board will make recommendations to the council for final approval.
Yeah.
Um, like the, Connor, you want to start driving this bus?
Yeah, yeah, I'll give a brief introduction to it. So this was also a city council directive, um, and it's positioned with the goal of consolidating quasi judicial land use functions under the city council. Um, when you have two different boards that are interpreting quasi judicial decisions, it can lead to, uh, separate and non, uh, you know, communicative interpretations of regulations where the city council may consider something that was passed by your board and the city council to mean one thing, whereas the board of adjustment could interpret it another way. And, uh, it's, it's difficult to have quasi judicial decisions, uh, being done on two different tracks, so to speak. So this ordinance would, uh, aim to promote a uniform interpretation, eliminate, eliminate, uh, you know, multiple hearings, whether it's, you know, having a board of adjustment meeting that just gets appealed by city council and then city council ends up making the decision in the end regardless, uh, which is how our code is written as it currently stands. And it just ensures a more cohesive policy direction for the city. Um, it's align, in alignment with our comprehensive plan as it relates to, uh, the city's continual evaluation of city boards. Um, right now, the city council would have the final decision on rezonings or site plans, whereas the board of adjustment would consider things like variances and special exceptions. Um, this fragmentation, as I alluded to, can lead to inconsistent interpretations, really. So the goal is to consolidate authority, enhance accountability as it places the final, uh, decision-making authority with the board that is ultimately elected uh, by the people of the city of Cape Canaveral. And that can help, you know, strengthen, uh, public confidence, accountability, but also just visibility, um, as well, so that decisions are not made through a board that people may not be as familiar with, um, definitely not elected officials on that situation. So really, it just wants to ensure that the city is united in their decision-making. It will reduce delays, uh, in the case that there'd have to be sequential hearings, you know, in the situation of an appeal. And it just really makes sure that our procedures are consistent. There's also just a few pieces of code cleanup in various other sections that remove references to the BOA, uh, you know, throughout the code. So as I said, it was a council directive to consolidate quasi judicial, uh, decision-making for a streamlined vision of the city. Uh, and staff recommends that the board, uh, recommend this ordinance to the city council for their approval, which would also be two readings. But also, as I said last time, we're here for questions.
Um, I went and looked at the, uh, current board members and it appeared that most all of them had termed out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that were there. Was there a problem keeping that board filled with members? Because I believe it was supposed to have seven members and.
Yes.
I kind of looked back, I did a little, uh, history research on that.
Mm-hmm.
To see, uh, what the, you know, members were on that. It looked like that it was tough to keep members on that board.
Yeah, I would say that that's an accurate assessment. I know that in the year that I've been here, we've not had much interest in new members joining the board. And you're correct that we've never been close to that seven number.
How often did that board meet?
In the time that I've been here, it has only met twice.
Twice, okay. So wasn't, wasn't a lot going on.
No, I think frankly, it probably, in the history before that, would meet once a year, if that.
I can see that being part of, part of the situation.
For sure.
And, and also slowing down the process. Uh, I'm going to turn to, uh, Susan here. Susan, you want to?
I'm all for it.
Discuss anything with this?
And, uh, I've, I've witnessed some of the miscommunications in the past and, and I think that this is a good idea. Again, this is a meeting about efficiency. We're, we're getting it going on here.
Mr. General Cor, head.
Uh, I'm for it also. I think it's just a cleaner process, make, makes life easier for everybody.
Did any of you find, uh, uh, Mi, Michael?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, number one, yeah, I agree that it makes a lot more sense that all, all variances or rezonings would come through us as opposed to having a separate board. And again, having to go through a step-by-step process that becomes longer. Um, just a couple of things. I found, uh, a couple of typos in here.
Okay.
On page four of sixteen, if I'm reading it correctly, online, the last word on line twenty-six and the last, the first word on line twenty-seven should not be struck through. It looks like city council was struck through.
You caught that too. Good eye.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, end of twenty-six, yep.
I missed that, okay. Good catch.
Let's see. The next thing was on page six of sixteen. Um, on line twenty-five and on line twenty-seven, city council is inserted twice. On twenty-five, it says owned by the city council, city council and was disapproved.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, now substantive, section one ten point three two A. We talk about a variance expiring twelve months after the effective date. Should that be changed to twenty-four months? Because section one ten point two two four for permit approval was changed from twelve months to twenty-four months.
I think that's also a consideration that could be made, I think.
To be consistent.
In the case of a variance, you know, it's the precursor to a site development plan. So I think that sometimes you have to be careful in terms of granting something that, you know, might not make sense two years later, and then you get an additional two years to actually do it. Um, but.
Well, no, well, I think they would run concurrently if I'm reading.
Yeah, where, where's the other reference?
One ten point two two four.
That I have, yeah, okay.
Where we, we changed the time to get a building permit from twelve months to twenty-four months. Well, if somebody's halfway through the building permit process and their variance is going to run out in twelve months, then essentially they're in a twelve-month time crunch to get their building permit.
I'm sorry, I'm, let me catch up with you. So I, I have one ten dash thirty-two on page six, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then the other reference?
One ten point two two four.
It was on the prior ordinance that we looked at.
Yes.
Page twenty-four of the packet, page thirteen out of seventeen, as it relates to ordinance number eight.
Point me to the right page and the same.
Yeah, are you, are you looking at paper copy?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's page thirteen out of seventeen on ordinance eight, the one that we just looked at last, not this one.
Oh, oh, all right.
Yeah, so he's, he's looking at code from the prior.
Two different ordinance, okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, so.
I'm like, where's two two four?
Because you have, basically what it's saying, if I'm reading this correct, Clarence, we have tw, after you get your site plan approval, you got twenty-four months to get your building permit.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'm saying if we give a variance as part of the site plan approval process,
Hmm.
that variance should be good for twenty-four months because you don't want it to expire. You, you're going to spend, you know, again, somebody's going to spend time and energy doing a project and then, uh, their approval runs out halfway through.
Uh, let me point one thing out, uh, uh, under, um, section one ten dash thirty-two. You read a little further down into that, upon written request, the property owner and city manager may extend the expiration date an additional twelve months.
Right, but think about this, okay? Let's say you're in the middle of permitting something, an approved site plan, okay? And you get to the twelve months. Well, in the meantime, the city council composition has changed because of a vote and the new city council doesn't like the project. So you've spent twelve months designing the project, spending architects, engineers, working with the city to get it approved, and now all of a sudden, the variances that make it feasible are not extended.
That thought crossed my mind, yes, that's a good point.
That, that to me is a big disincentive for somebody to want to spend the million dollars to develop a project on the site.
Connor, can you respond to that?
Yeah, yeah, that does, that is logical, especially because I think that the way the code is written now kind of considers that someone would get their variance and then start seeking approval. But if they're doing it concurrently, that you do kind of want those timelines to align with one another. Um.
Well, the variance would be approved as part of the site plan and then they would start the permit process where they would have twenty-four months now to get their permits, where their site plan would be approved. If we don't change this section of twenty-four months, part of the site plan that was approved would expire after twelve months.
Yeah.
So there's an inconsistency.
Yeah, no, I have a, I think I have a solution for that. That's a, that's a very good point. When, there's, there's two, two ways to, if there's a variance that's just a separate one-off individual application for a variance, I don't see why the twelve months should be changed. But when the variance is approved in conjunction with a site plan.
Right.
Ah, yeah.
It should have the same duration as the site plan.
I like that because.
That's what your point you're trying to make.
Yeah, correct.
So I would, on this ord, on the BOA ordinance, one ten dash thirty-two, I could add some language that says it's, it's twelve months, but if it's approved in conjunction with the site plan, it.
Shall expire when the site plan expires.
Pursuant to the site plan expiration, one ten dash two two.
That would make perfect sense.
That makes, that makes.
Becomes part of the site plan approval.
Yeah, excellent.
Yeah, almost similar to how the, the height allowance is included within the site plan approval. Yeah, that's, that's a good way of doing it because we do get, you know, as Anthony alluded to with the one-off, we get people that come in and just say, hey, I want to build this single family home. The setback is ten, I want it to be eight.
Right.
And I think in that instance, twelve months probably makes more sense.
Absolutely.
Um, but if it's tied to a site plan, it should be tied to the site plan time-wise.
Okay, and in conjunction with that, then, at the top of page seven of sixteen, we have the expiration of the first twelve-month period. We're going to have to clarify it there. And in section B, at the end of line thirteen, I would think that the eighteen, if it's approved in conjunction with the site plan, should become thirty months.
Could you remind me of where that eighteen to thirty was?
Uh, page seven of sixteen, the eighteen is on line thirteen. Where it talks about a variance becoming null and void.
Okay.
So if it's part of a site plan approval, then you would add twelve months to the eighteen, to me. So it should be thirty months if it's in conjunction with a site plan approval.
So, I mean, I, um, if you just, if you, the board would just give me liberty to actually modify that language, I, after the meeting. Um, but I understand the gist. If, if the, if the variance, special exceptions approved in conjunction with the site plan, it runs concurrent with the site plan duration.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
If it's a one-off, then it's subject to the twelve-month rule.
Yep.
And in that case, you're right, instead of being thirty months, it could actually be twenty-four months.
Yeah. I need to, I need to look at that.
Yeah, I'm assessing that eighteen to eight, that section B that talks about eighteen months.
Yeah, B is like, okay, if you don't go forward, nobody can rely on it in the future past eighteen months. So it was six months after the twelve-month approval period for the variance.
I think it may also more relate to the abandonment of a structure or the abandonment of a business if they're no longer in operation, you know, if it's something where someone's currently in operation, they get this variance, but then they cease to exist and then someone tries to come back and claim that variance.
Right.
I think that that's the main interpretation on that one, but Anthony and I can definitely see what makes sense there, you know, to be in alignment because if it makes sense to go higher than eighteen, it does, but.
I don't think we need to go to thirty, but if we went to twenty-four to be consistent with the language we're adding above, where we're changing from twelve to twenty-four if it's in conjunction with a site plan.
Sure, because I do think that those two things are, while not necessarily mutually exclusive, they are different circumstances, but I do see why aligning them might make sense.
Okay.
I just.
And the only other thing, I caught a typo on page ten of sixteen. Um, section one ten point nine two, line thirty-two. We should take out the word the before city council because it's in there twice.
Yep, to the board of adjustment or the city council, yeah.
Got it.
That was it. That's all my comments.
Yeah, we're doing grammar. I like it.
I am a CPA by background, so I am very, very detail oriented, unfortunately.
Fortunately for us, you are.
Yes.
Those are great, those are great comments.
Absolutely, fantastic, fantastic. Anthony, you were gonna, you and Connor are going to get together and rewrite that, or is that?
Yeah, I, I, I understand what the board wants to do and tie it to, to the site plan approval process. So all the technical changes that were mentioned, I've written them all down. So if the board doesn't have any further discussion, if you want to make a motion to approve, make all the changes, technical changes that were referenced. And then, um, I will align one ten dash thirty. then I will align 110-32 with the site plan expiration and 110-224, and I'll have to, you know, and I'll modify the ordinance accordingly.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 09-2025, reassigning the duties of the Board of Adjustment to the City Council and abolishing the Board of Adjustment. The Plan Zoning Board will make a recommendation to the City Council for final approval as amended by this discussion.
And I'll look for a second on that motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Go ahead and have a roll call.
Vice Chair Denny?
For the motion.
Member General Cor?
For the motion.
Member Hartman?
For the motion.
Chairman Stroud?
For the motion.
All right.
All right, thank you, guys, so all three of the items today will be planned to be heard at the council meeting on December 16th for their first reading, and the board appointment will only require one meeting, of course, not two.
Oh.
All right.
I do have a question?
Yeah, Renee, you can...
Anthony, since the responsibilities will now go over to the BOA, if there is an appeal to the council's decision, is that possible? Would that go to an appeal court, or is there no possible appeal?
Council's decisions are ultimately going to be final, and then the recourse after that is an appeal to the, to the Circuit Court.
Got it, yeah, may I remember in that appeal section, it still alludes to community appearance boards being appealed to City Council, but now with BOA, it would go to a body higher than the city.
BOA, they'd be, they would be abolished, and site plan approval, they'll be, be final by the council, subject to, you know, appellate rights under, under Florida law to the Circuit Court, CAB, we haven't really gotten any direction from the City Council whether that board remains or that board also gets consolidated, we might hear more next Tuesday or the following Tuesday, but their, their decisions are applicable to the City Council under the existing code.
Yep, all right, yeah, thank you for that verification.
We're tackling, tackling some heavy priorities more with the site plan process and variances and special exceptions, which are the bread and butter.
No, absolutely, anything we can do to streamline that process, I can tell you, makes, makes sense for the city and for future development.
All right, well, thank all you guys, appreciate it.
All right, and I guess ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'll second the motion.
I just want to state to everybody, I appreciate everyone's participation tonight, and everybody has done a fantastic job, and city, thank you for your input, and Anthony, we couldn't do this without you, Renee, appreciate you, and Ms. Suzanne Rider, I look forward to seeing you in the near future. This meeting is adjourned.
All right, thank you, guys.